Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August 21, 2025 regular meeting of the Sunset Beach Planning Board. Seeing we have a quorum called meeting to order, we can stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, as usual, our first order of business is conflict of interest. Does any member have a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest with regard to any item on the agenda? And if so, please state so at this time. Kevin?
Nothing at this time.
No, not.
I do not. First item is to amend or approve the agenda. And before we make a motion, I'm recommending that we consider making not a change to agenda, but a change to the order since we have guests here today and public to put new business, which is seven and seven one into six and six point one slot, and old business, which is in the six and six point one slot, down to the seven and seven point one slot. So we'll make the site, major site plan review first and then review the parking text omitted. You want to make a motion to amend as such? Any other changes?
Make a motion to revise the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first order of business is reviewing our minutes from our previous meeting, July 17, 2025. And the only thing I have for you, Kimberly, is three, section three, like the fourth sentence down, seven point one, election of chair. It was election of vice chair. So the word between of and chair, it should be vice. You got it at the end in seven point one correctly. But we, the change we made there was to elect a vice chair only. Any other changes for staff on the minutes?
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the minutes are approved with the one, with the one change. So much paper, I got no place to put it. Okay, next item is public comments on agenda items only, as always. Three minutes. And on item, there's only two items on agenda today. So the public, welcome to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then speak accordingly. Welcome.
Way, 7610 dash four High Market Street, Sunset Beach. I'm really here to just continue to stress how important it is that we have, if this hotel does come like it is, that we have some form of barriers. And I've looked at the plans and it shows shrubbery along that line that covers, not in front of High Market Street, but down behind the, the hotel. And just want to make sure that we have some, some barriers between us and the hotel, as well as making sure the dumpster area is securely fastened. We have a lot of animals. We have deer, alligators, raccoons, all that, that are all back in that area. And I can fear that things will be in that dumpster area. So just want to make sure that we continue to focus in on making sure that those areas look nice and for, especially for the High Market Street and the privateer lane. And I know these ladies are here for the sanctuary area as well. But I'm just here to show that I'm, will support. But I want you guys to really think about the neighbors that are there and what we're having to see. So please understand that. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
My name is Bonnie Gable and I live at 1620 Manta Ray Way, and that's in the sanctuary. And I hope I can read my notes. Probably gonna have to take my glasses off. First, this is sort of unrelated. I would like to thank the mayor that he's not here and whoever is else is responsible for the recent upgrades to the town park, to the benches and the swings and the platforms under the swings. That was excellent, much appreciated. We have a great park. I hope this isn't a waste of time. My concern is the decision has already been made for this property. And you know what, from, as an outsider, it feels like any decisions for amendments and provisions necessary for this to be developed have already been decided. In short, I've lived here, you know, just a couple of years and my observation is that, that the town administration seems to be more concerned with the revenue than the concerns and welfare of the citizenry. That's just, just my observation. And I'm, and I forgot to say in the beginning, because I was taking my glasses off, I do thank you for this opportunity to speak. My first concern is a clarification of exactly where that road is going to lead into the parking lot. And I think that's off of Chandler's Lane. I don't know if Chandler's Lane has now been renamed to Manta Ray, and it's actually Way, not Lane, not Drive. But I'm, I have concerns about that. Have major concern about cut through traffic into the sanctuary, which as you, as has been noted, are private roads, and we're going to be responsible for maintaining those. We already have a tremendous amount of cut through traffic. I live just a few houses down on Manta Ray. So this is a huge concern of mine because it's going to be a constant flow of traffic if there's not some kind of gate barricade, something to prevent all the people that are going and coming and the delivery trucks. They're going to go in that driveway, they're going to come back through the sanctuary. I think if that was your neighborhood, you'd probably feel the same way. I also have a concern that there appears to be, from the site map, no plantings on the north side, which would be the north side of the parking lot and along that, that road that leads in. I think all of us in the sanctuary would really appreciate it if you would make that recommendation that they do plantings on the north side. And I think my friend's going to cover my fourth concern, so I'll, I'll leave that. I do have a concern about light pollution and whether these will be illuminated all night. Again, thank you for your time and, and your consideration to our concerns. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Margini. I live at 1627 Palomar Drive in the sanctuary. My neighbor covered the incoming traffic. I also have a concern about the roadway and, and a barrier on the, along the roadway coming in because it is fairly close to the homes that are right there and having to see traffic lights from the cars going in and out is obviously not something everybody wants on their back porch. The landscaping plan, viewing the cars, concerns about the traffic through the neighborhood. The builder's not going to do anything to the roads once he's done building. There are roads now. What stands there is what is. So any additional traffic through, like Ms. Gable said, is going to be on us to repair the roads as the sanctuary HOA. Also, I have a lot of concerns about water pressure, cable. Currently, you know, our water pressure is okay. It's not great. A hundred and nine rooms in a hotel certainly is going to put a strain on the system. Is there anything in place to help with that? Cable also, we go through, you know, experience a lot of buffering early in the morning, late at night when many people are watching TV. Is there any upgrades to the broadband system being done? You know, these are things that affect our everyday life, water, cable. Obviously, a lot of people work from home as well and we go through issues. I also want to know about the pets. Hilton Hotel, all Hilton's welcome pets, and that's wonderful. I frequent Hilton Hotels for that reason. I'm a pet lover. I want to know a little bit more about the areas for the pets at the Hilton Hotel because if I was staying there, my idea would be to walk through the beautiful sanctuary neighborhood that's there. So is it, what's being done kind of to deter and keep the hotel guests and their pets from coming through our neighborhood? We have a lot of dogs there already, dogs and dogs don't always get along. I know my dog's very reactive and additional dogs in the neighborhood, you know, are really not something that we, we want. And I feel that these people may not be inclined to pick up their dog waste as well when you're not, you know, in your own neighborhood. So that's a concern. I just, I feel like I'm not opposed to a hotel. I just feel like I wish Hilton has a lot of other brands, more upscale brands. I feel like Sunset Beach is a small community and I feel like throwing in a roadside hotel just isn't something that fits the community. A boutique hotel with a nice restaurant, a spa, things that the community can actually use would, in my eyes, make more sense. The biggest concern is going to be also flooding. How high are you putting, you know, how high are they building up to put the hotel on? We're obviously going to be down from that. I know, so I, I don't know how to read all those plans. I saw some things about relocating ditches, things like that. So I do have a really big concern about flooding. And that's it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Any other public comments before we? Yes, sir?
Mike Mill. I'm also in the sanctuary, 1557 Moray Loop. And my main concern with the hotels, again, I looked at the plans and the entrance off of Moray Loop. We already get a lot of cut through traffic there, speeders cutting through. It's, it's a natural way to get out to 17 if you're in the, you know, on that other side. And it's going to get worse with the hotel. I walk my dog through two or three times a day and I seen yesterday, delivery trucks delivering from the food line, cutting through our community, jumping the curbs. And it's, it, they, they don't go slow. And my wife and I walking the dogs have had, already had to jump out of the way from speeding cars coming through. They don't slow down. And if you look at the plan, that's where they're going to be coming from Route 17. If they come down to go to the hotel, they're going to be cutting through the sanctuary. They're not going all the way around. So that's my main concern, concern is the safety. And I hope that when you take a look at the traffic, I'm assuming there's going to be a traffic plan, those sanctuary needs to be, not an option for that hotel to run their traffic through. I know, I'm pretty sure Sunset Beach doesn't allow gated communities, but that would work there and maybe you can make an exception because I don't see any other way of stopping the traffic from coming through there the way it's laid out right now. So, and, and I do believe somebody's going to get hurt just with the speeders we have through there already. And you're probably going to multiply that, you know, when the hotel was there and it's going to be a pretty bad situation. So hopefully, hopefully that can be addressed as this planning goes, goes forward. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, thank you. As we did, we adjusted agenda. So actually, our next item is the, what was listed as new business, seven point one, major site plan, Sunset Beach Hospitality Ventures, Brunswick County Parcel, et cetera. So first of all, we'll, I guess the way we'll go through this, I'll kick it over to Ron Satterfield first to give a staff report, background, et cetera. Then I gave at that point, we can hear from the applicant to say whatever they want to say. And then we'll probably just move down the dais here from Kevin to Stuart to me on any comments or question while the applicant is there before we move on to a vote or not. Okay, all yours, Ron.
Yep. John?
John. Is this better? All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to just provide a brief overview of what we, what was, what you have before you and go a little bit of background, maybe talk about what the process is, as well as the Mud zoning district and what's, how, how is this use allowed and those kind of things? And kind of what's your role as planning board? I'm going to let the applicant go into a little more detail with their site plan, if that's okay with the board.
Proceed.
All right, so we do have an application from Sunset Beach Hospitality Ventures LLC. They're requesting the approval of this Hampton Inn Hotel. The property is owned Mud Mixed Juice District and is located there up in the staff report, I put the northwest corner of High Market, Chandler's and Manta Ray because to be honest with you, I don't know if that section is, is named Chandler's or, or if it's owned Manta Ray, just to be honest with you. So that's why you saw, if you've read the staff report, why you saw both. While the subject property in question is about 5.28 acres, it's my understanding the hotel is going to be occupying about 2.4 acres of that. And there will be a subdivision plat at some point presented to staff by the current owner of the property that will designate the 2.4 acre hotel property and then two other tracks along, one would have the intersection of Chandler slash Manta Ray and High Market and then what I'm going to call the pump station track, my understanding. So there would be a lot between this property and the sanctuary that houses that, the pump station. But I'll let the applicant, if they want to provide a little bit more detail on that, if necessary. So the Mud zoning district allows this use under prescribed, what I call permitted with use standards. And those use standards are in your code. And so that is a right, this use, this use is allowed by right, provided they can show how they comply with the standards. So it's not like a special use permit, it's not a rezoning, the kind of things that, which some people may, you know, feel like it should have to go somewhere further than just this board. Planning Board has the approval authority of major site plans in the town of Sunset You can ultimately, at the end of this process, you can approve the plan before you, you can deny it, or you can approve with, I'm going to call corrections. The code says conditions, but I don't want you guys to think that that means that you can add conditions that are outside of what the code requires. This is, you have basically this administrative review, so everyone's clear on that. The Mud does not have in the town's code, any specific design standards that this hotel has to meet from the town's perspective. I believe there's some, some PUA documents that they have to get through, so the review board with the, with the, what I'm going to call architectural review board, I think is the appropriate name for the Mud property owners. So there's not specific design standards that the Mud will require them to comply with.
As opposed to the overlay district.
As opposed, it is right.
Overlay district, the town has control of the architectural.
I'm getting, I'm getting there. You, I'm familiar with the code. We do have a gateway over, we have a gateway overlay district and we have urban design standards in our code, but the Mud is specifically exempt from those standards. So you have elevations in your package. The purpose of those elevations was to show compliance with height. They're allowed four stories and no more than 60 feet inclusive of, of, of the entire building. That includes heating and air units, wall, parapet walls, et cetera. So that's why you have those elevations. The elevations, that's the only reason why you have those elevations for height purposes. Nothing else. Is that, any questions on that process from the planning?
One other question, I guess, and it comes up a lot, is the buffering. The buffering is around the mud, not inside the mud, correct? That's why I read the code.
Correct. And it's a good question. And I was, I can come with a little bit of detail on that if you want.
And I guess you can comment, how does that pump station track count? Is that, what's the width of that? So is that buffered to, because that's the outside edge.
It's the outside edge and there aren't.
So that has to be buffered to what is adjacent to, which I believe is the sanctuary.
But they were there, the pump station was there. So until that property is built on further, it would not, the, the current owner would need to, not need to do anything else, which, along that edge.
But the width of that will satisfy the 15 feet, correct?
I have not seen the actual width of it, but I don't, I have to go back and look to see exactly what is the width of that lot. And applicant may can tell exactly what the, what it is. So let me go through a little bit of the staff report, then we can take some additional questions. That's okay.
It's 50 feet to the road.
All right. So the elevations provided indicate compliance with the building height requirements, as I stated. They're not subject to design standards of EEO or any site overview by, or approval by the planning board. And also, any signage that you saw on the building, which have, they have been removed now from revised elevations that you guys received just today. Those signs will be permitted in a separate process. So that's why they've been removed. All right, so I mentioned earlier, hotels are permitted with use standards. The applicable use standard is that the lot size shall be minimum of one acre. Building setbacks for the mud are five feet from all property lines and a hotel motel may be constructed to a height of 60 feet inclusive of all mechanical devices, parapets and similar perduces, and no more than, and have a maximum of four stories. Parking standards for hotels, there's one parking space per sleeping room plus one per four seats in a meeting or assembly room. The minimum parking required based on their plans, 116. They're showing 113, I believe, on the site and then, no, 100, sorry, seven on the site and then 100, and then another 13 spaces. They have a shared parking agreement with the owners of the mud. We're in the process of getting a shared parking agreement. I don't think it's been finalized, but.
We have a draft though, correct?
You have a draft in your package. Both parties agree to that. Landscaping, Mr. Chair is one of your questions. There are no regulator heritories on the site. Market Street, High Market is not a public street, so there are no street or plantings required. And foundation plantings aren't also not a standard of the EEO, so there are no foundation plantings required. And I'll let the applicant go into more detail, but it's my understanding they intend to plant foundation plantings. But they're not required to plant them to satisfy a code requirement. Parking lot, provided some parking lot planting in your package, some information there, but interior parking lot areas shall be landscaped equal to eight percent of the gross paved area to be used for parking, loading or vehicle use. Each island, a minimum of eight feet in width and no less than 100 square feet overall. And then each island shall contain at least one tree and eight, one tree of eight feet in height and six shrubs, 18 inches in height at planting. Secuentive parking spaces shall incorporate landscape potential, there's no more than 15 spaces apart and contain 144 square feet of, I'm going to say, planting area and at least eight feet in, eight feet in width. And then all interior plantings shall be curved or blocked for protection. The adjacent properties are zoned mud, including the pump station to the north and the town home development to the west.
And what I could see on the drawing is they comply with the internal parking lot.
Yes, that's, that was my conclusion.
Exceeded, actually, if I remember.
Yes, yes. So the, if you look at the chart and the code, which I have provided in your case summary as well, your staff report, mud, adjacent to mud is not required to provide any buffering. However, you do see some plantings shown along, I'm going to say, I think it's Privateer Drive to the plan, or plan north, but to the west of the hotel. They have attempted to provide some buffer relief, if you will, between their, the back of the hotel and the residential town homes to the west. All right, development of the site is required to meet stormwater requirements of the county and the state. Before they begin construction, we will need to see approval from the, from Brunswick County and the state. And it's my understanding they are working with both entities for permitting, and I'll let the applicant go into more detail where that stands, should you need that information. Traffic, we have driveways proposed from High Market and Manta Ray slash Chandler. Both of those are privately owned, maintained streets. We did, when the project went to TRC, we did some, provide the NC DOT an opportunity to provide comments. I believe the applicant has made, and I'll let the applicant provide some additional information. DOT at the time, TRC was not conclusive whether or not any, any improvements on Seaside or Sunset would be needed. They may, they, they may have been interested in requiring a turning warrant analysis, but when I spoke to them, they did not, at that time, they were not, at that point.
Did the applicant provide NC DOT what they're scoping, request letter?
We provided them with the plans and a traffic impact analysis was not required. I got that information from the DOT. I can let the applicant let, just discuss what they've done with the DOT. But they got a plan. When we got the plan for TRC review, we, we included Department of Transportation in the review. Email I got back was traffic impact analysis is not required. They may need a turning warrant analysis, and that's when I've asked the applicant and the DOT to work together on that. But regardless, any of those improvements would be off-site and, which is not, the town cannot require off-site traffic improvements per state statute. So based on my review, and it was a question about lighting too, the lighting plans, they do have a plan, photometric plan, I believe it was prepared by Brunswick Electric, showing 30 foot tall lighting within the parking lot. Code allows 40 feet for non-resident, for non-residential. And my review of it, it appears that at least the foot candles at the property lines, at the street, et cetera, could be, appear to be compliant.
Relinquished.
I'm sorry.
They're downlights and they don't exceed the candle power for over the property line for usage, over their property line.
On their, over their property lines. Now, we haven't seen any lighting for, that may be on the building or the canopy, but typically we get those at the building plan level and that we would assure compliance at that point. Are the, are the fixtures correct, you know, what is, how do they direct light and those kind of things? But I believe they're still working on some of the elevations and some of those specifics of the plan.
Would they update the lighting plan?
Yes.
At that time?
Yes, if, if needed, they would update the lighting plan, yes. So based on my review, doesn't mean my reviews, you know, you ultimately, you're the approval authority. I believe that it complies. I, you know, when they went through the TRC process, requested that they include some landscaping. We discussed the dumpster pad, where the dumpster location and so forth.
We have a detail here of the enclosure.
Yeah, there's a detail of enclosure. So I believe it was with the elevations. So what I, my inspection of the plan, it felt as compliant with the code. Ultimately, you need to make that decision. And again, your role is to review this as administrative review. You're looking at approving the plan, denying the plan or approve, the code says approve with conditions. But again, the intent of those conditions would be if you found any deficiencies, you condition that those deficiencies are corrected prior to the chair signing off on the plan ultimately. I don't know if any specific questions or, if not.
Any specific questions for Ron before we bring the applicant up?
No.
Applicant's free to present. Applicant's free to present if they'd like, or we'll just move on with our discussion, so.
I'm Gail Wallace with Clearington Properties. We represent Sunset Beach Hospitality LLC. We are the developer. The only thing I would like to add, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, but I'd like to add really about the subdivision of the, of that tract of land. So it's a little over five acres. Through negotiations with the current owner, we are taking 2.4 acres of that portion. The remainder, well, it's going to be subdivided into three portions. A portion will go to the POA, which is existing, the Sunset Beach POA, or the Village at Sunset Beach POA, which is for the lift station. There's no work that will be done on that. And the reason they have subdivided that and we're not absorbing that is for a couple of reasons. It's being used, the lift station is being used for the entire development as well as, so there will be no future development. There is that buffer between our property and the sanctuary. The balance of that lot will be future development, retail, office, however, however the current owner wishes to develop that property. We have no control over that. The access off of Manta Ray is so that our guests have the ability to enter both from High Market as well as off of Monterey or Chandler Slane. Future development will likely tie into that driveline as well.
I guess while we're on circulation, while you're up there.
Uh huh.
I guess I had a question. We have that driveway, wait, I've got too many pieces of paper now. We have that driveway. If I can find my pink one. Off to the right-hand side there that goes into.
C5.
Yeah, on C5, Corbeau's Private Access Drive. So that's going through off your property line into Track 3, that one acre site?
Show me where you're talking.
C5. This, okay. How are you putting that there? That's not, you said this is this track.
We have an easement.
There's an.
You have an easement to that.
With the current property owner, yes, sir.
Existing, actually.
It's already existing? So you have an easement to build that there and use that for ingress and egress?
That's correct.
Okay. So, sorry I jumped in. We'll start with Kevin, any questions for the applicant?
The biggest question I had in one of the public comments was the whole internet problem in Sunset Beach. And would we have any stuff done by the hotel people as far as internet upgrades? Or as far as coverage, because that is an issue.
Are you asking if the owner intends to upgrade the internet that's available to the town of Sunset Beach?
Possibly, yeah. Maybe you can do that.
Certainly was not our intention.
Nothing else right now.
Stuart?
Couple of questions for you. One is to say thanks for doing the buffer along Privateer Loop. And would it be possible to extend those plantings north? To extend them up to where it would intersect the parking lot?
I had the same question. I think it, the hedges you built are quite nice. You got the, the whole row of the wax myrtles, and then you've gone to the Nelly Stephen Holly, which are going to be dense and tall and grow pretty fast. But likewise, I just noticed to the right of that, I think that's, Stuart, is this where you're at? You have a gap.
Yeah.
You gap the hedge there. And I guess what we're asking, would it be, would you be willing to maybe, I think you need maybe five or six more probably wax myrtles there? So you got a height up, height, so you go sidewalk to sidewalk? You want to look at my picture to see?
No, I'm good.
What I'm talking about?
No, no, I understand.
Because you got a sidewalk to the left where the wax myrtles end. Then in the middle around the pool area, you go with the higher denser Nelly Hollies, which would be good, it'll provide a good hedge there. But then you kind of leave an opening, and I believe behind there, that's kind of the back of those houses. So there's a, you might need, I guess I was kind of figuring, you might need another five or six wax myrtles there to complete that hedge to the sidewalk. Of course, not in the parking lot, just that little gap there. Any issue, are you doing that?
No.
If you want to look at my picture, before you say anything, you can see what I'm asking for.
Our landscape plan is to meet the UDO requirements. Our intent is to embellish upon the existing plan. So we want to be good neighbors that, you know, we're, we have no intentions of causing hardship to the folks that are currently existing, as well as any future development that will happen here at the village. We intend to embellish the landscape plan, and we will make sure that between the hotel and the back, what we'll call the backside of the hotel, the pool side of the hotel, and the neighbors behind us, that they're comfortable with plantings that are there.
May I pick up on that real quickly? Ms. Wallace just mentioned their intent was the landscape plan to show compliance with the UDO. They could have, there was conversation, should they even remove those wax myrtles and Nelly Hollies, Ron, that you were just mentioning on the plan, because that showed, because they weren't required to do that. In my conversation with them, I asked them to at least keep those on there. They did take the foundation plantings off, but ask them to show that, so they are proposing something between them and the townhomes to the west.
Now, we can't enforce it, but if they commit to doing it, are they doing it?
If they commit to doing it, are they doing it? It still is not a requirement, but it is, but ultimately could be your approved plan. So that's kind of where it goes. But they are not required to put foundation plantings, they're not required to put street yard plantings, and they are not required to put that buffer there. But I felt like it was important to keep those, that buffer shown on your plan, even though it was not a, even though it was not required by your code.
Right, all that's technically required is the internal parking lot plantings, which I looked at and appeared that they did meet all those requirements or exceeded. So anything, that hedge row, which I'm requesting goes from sidewalk to sidewalk, is optional, other than understanding publicly they intend to do it.
Correct.
But can't be compelled to do it.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
I had another question, which was. So currently, if this gets built like it is, and hotel residents want to travel to pedestrian traffic, want to travel to the east. There's no sidewalk for them to walk on to get to the restaurants or shops. How would you all feel about extending the sidewalk along the High Market so that the hotel residents would have?
We won't own that property. That would be something, you know, that future development would tie into, I would suspect. Is it conversation that we can have with the current owner where we do it at the same time and they pay for it? I'm happy to have that conversation with Kelly.
Right, because your sidewalks currently going to the, I guess would be the east property line?
Yeah, goes to the east.
And also in front of the parking spots that you're using.
Correct.
So all your shared parking spots have sidewalk in front of them.
Correct.
It's the extended piece there that Kelly still owns. Controls that is, again, if Richard was here, he would say it's a sidewalk to nowhere because it just ends in grass, which is.
Yeah, just.
Nobody likes, but you don't own the property. Unless the property owner there allows you to do it, and then whatever financial, whatever. Yeah, what other financial agreements are between you and that property owner says, yeah, I eventually want a sidewalk there in the future, so if we put in it now, I'll pay share in the cost. And that's just between you and whoever that property owner is.
Right, and they don't know how they're going to develop it at this point.
Right.
Yeah. All right, one last quick question. The pool in the back, is there hours of operation for the pool? Is it cut off or is it lit?
Yeah, there will be hours of operation. We are not the operators, so I can't tell you exactly what those are. You know, the pool's not open all night long, but I, at this time, cannot tell you that they'll be closing the pool at nine o'clock, at eight o'clock, but it's not open all night long.
Okay, and are there lights back there?
There will have to be some lighting, of course, obviously, you know, and we'll work with Health Department, because that is, the swimming pool is permitted through the Health Department. And whatever their foot handle requirements are, we'll meet those.
Okay.
And I think on the, well, you do indicate a maestro enclosure at this time, but you'll, obviously have to, comply with state code on what the fencing, that's the state reg on the fencing and enclosure.
Yes, state code and as long as the town, as well as the towns code around swimming pools, but yes.
What are we, what are we?
It has to be at least four foot in height. As far as materials and things.
We don't specify materials or.
I'd have to.
I didn't find it, so.
Right, but we'll get that more details when it comes in for the building plan.
Right.
As well as any lighting associated with the pool as well.
All right. Okay, that's all my questions for the developer. What do you, Ron?
I guess some questions, which you may or may not want to answer, I guess. Back to the traffic thing. So someone is, your engineer or somebody's working with NC DOT?
We reached out to them. They indicated with our plan that has been presented, a traffic study is not required. Now, they may require an additional, a traffic plan be done when Kelly presents, or her owner presents additional development. But as far as the hotel goes.
So there is no scope sent to NC DOT at this point?
That's correct.
With the peak trips per, in a peak, trips per, in a peak hour, trips per day?
Right, their review, their review was that at this time, a traffic analysis was not required. Future development could then trigger a traffic impact be done, study be done.
To answer your scoping question, they look at, they saw 109 units, or 109 rooms proposed. And then they plug in their, in their analysis. The trip generation, IT trip generation, whatever, version, whatever, most, whatever they're using now.
And we don't know those numbers.
I don't have those numbers, no, but.
Is it 100 trips of between eight and nine, and 100 trips between four and five?
We don't have those numbers, but regardless is what this DOT require. And they have told me via email that they were, did not, they were not requiring a traffic impact analysis because it did not meet the thresholds. To expand on what Ms. Wallace just mentioned, they did indicate to me that as the future development occurs, they may be requiring a traffic impact analysis for that. They were, they were more interested in what is, what is, what is Ms. Stewart's future plans, if you will, for that property than what this hotel was.
So they continue to develop, they may have to submit something.
There may have to be something to see.
Separate to NC DOT, see how it affects their state roads.
Correct, see if there.
And then they would be included in that as existing.
Correct.
Capac, or existing load.
Correct.
Correct.
The only thing related to the hotel that I heard from the DOT was maybe a turning warrant analysis would be required. I asked specifically, will one be required, and never got a specific answer, so that's what I've asked.
And I did not either.
And that's why I've asked, I've then tried to put Ms. Wallace and the DOT together to figure out what would be. And even then, they were saying there might be, there may be some off-site improvements necessary if a turn lane had to be put in, or if even just some, I'm going to even say some road edging work or something, and if so, were there any, you know, any easements needed and those kind of things? Again, that was not something the town can require because it's off-site, and there are DOT roads. But at least I did try to put them, put the two parties together.
Okay, so sticking to roads, since they're Manta Ray Lane Way Drive, whatever it's called. That, the connection between that and the sanctuary, I was here when we did, now the sanctuary was pre-UDO chain. So sanctuary roads are private roads to the sanctuary and their POA, correct? They were, they were not town roads. And Manta Ray, whatever it is, inside the mud is private roads to it. So they're free to control traffic the way they want.
Right.
I mean, it's not up to the town. So if the POA in either group. Because I remember, I think we kind of talked about it when we did sanctuary, we thought it was beneficial to connect that property to the mud so they don't have to go out on the, whatever the road is there, 904, to get from their homes into the shopping area. But it's free for them to decide otherwise at any time.
We'd have to look, yes, they, they control their roads, whether or not you're suggesting, can they put a gate up or some type of other barrier? I'd have to really look at our code. I don't know that our code allows gated communities and gates, barriers. But can some softening occur, narrowing of right of ways, some type of, you know, traffic calming device?
Traffic calming.
I don't want to get specific. Well, speed bumps, I think, we have to work with the fire department on that. So, but can some other type of, can something?
But I guess.
Traffic calming measure be installed.
To make sure we know, the, other than restrictions that we would have to look at to see, because they're both privately owned, it's up to the owner of the road to decide.
Two owners have to work together.
The two owners have to work together to control that. Whether, like you say, they want to put a little circle there, or some sort of narrowing, or sever. But that's not, not up to the town at all. It's up to the owners of the roads on either side. Hopefully, it would come to, and I will have to admit, when I was here, when we were doing the sanctuary, we thought it was a benefit. And I don't, I would have to look back at the original sanctuary plans, which I no longer have, whether they had it there originally, and we, and I don't remember, and not, because we thought it would be a benefit to not make people go out onto 904 to get through. And of course, I'm sure they all agree that's a good idea now, except they don't want anybody else to use it.
And I don't know.
But I don't believe, we can't do that, or.
We also have a fire code.
Yeah, for access to.
For access more than, I think two, at least two entrances and exits are required for a division more than 100, or 100 or more residential units.
Right, so did they need that for the fire? They have another, they have two others.
I'd have to go back and.
They have two others already, I think. Okay. So hopefully they can, both sides work that out to a perfect solution. The only, and the other thing on landscaping, I know you sit there, you're going to have to smile. Any way to get any more trees? I guess maybe you can talk to your, you got to find the landscaping plan.
Let's see, nine.
Which one, C9?
Nine.
Glad you're keeping my in. You know, obviously, you're not, we don't, because there was no trees there. You don't have to replace it, but I certainly, again, on C9, in the rear of the building along what would be, I don't know what's underneath there, E13, going across, there might be two to the left of the pool and one to the right of the pool, a spot for two more or three more live oaks, but, but I realize, I know, there was none there that you need to replace. And I don't know what a live oak costs. I'm sure it's hundreds of dollars, but.
Well, my response is that we will take a long, hard look at the landscape plan. And obviously, we want our property to look nice and be comfortable and be inviting for our guests, and also be aesthetically pleasing to the development itself, as well as our neighbors.
Right, well, that would be suggested, it would be appreciated if you look. Because I was the view from the residential area, they would see the hedges, edge, up, down. And then a few years ahead, there could be a couple of higher trees above it, so you get that layered height look. And then the building of the hotel is back there, I think it would be a beneficial, more a pleasant look.
Appreciate the suggestion.
So it suggests that you would at least look, because we love trees here, so three more live oaks would be nice.
Appreciate.
Lisa, don't get too constipated over there. Okay. I think that's all the questions I had.
Okay.
Just one thing, it wasn't discussed, but it brought up a public meeting, a public comment here, thank you. Someone questioned water pressure. And I just wanted to mention that the water there is provided by Brunswick County, and the applicant is working with Brunswick County for water and sewer and so forth. They have to comply with whatever Brunswick County requirements are. And there'll be fire testing and things to make sure the pressure is good for, you know, to put out fires and those kind of things as well.
Yeah, the chief talked to him about that, having all the fire, pressure testing for the fire. Yeah, all the, well, the stormwater, water is the county. Yeah, all the, well, the stormwater, water is the county. Obviously, internet and cable service is focused broadband, which is a private company co-op or whatever. And of course, electric and lighting is Brunswick Electric, corporations control that, so all we can do with some of those is guide to a good solution. So barring any other questions, our choices, we need a motion on our, well, three, as he said. Let me get to the right page here. If I can find it. The ABC thing, I moved it around. Sorry for the delay. Somewhere here, I'm going to have to read that thing off.
What's up? You don't have a consistency statement, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
You don't, you don't need a consistency statement for a site plan approval or deny.
There's not one.
There's not one.
There's not one?
No, I could tell you, I can read you what the code says.
Okay, I'm sticking to the other one. Okay, so yeah, so then we need a motion either to vote to approve, vote to deny, or vote with any required compliance changes, which at this point I don't see, so.
Do you mind if I read you what the code says?
Yes, please.
Just to put it in the record, so it says, I'm looking in the, in the UDOs, the planning boards that review the major site plan and written recommendations to UDO administrator and the TRC. Applicable prior approving, denying, or conditionally approving the site plan. If the site plan submitted otherwise meets all of the standards of the ordinance, the planning board shall approve such. And so that's why I go back again and say, approval, denial, or approval conditions, but those conditions need to be based on deficiencies that you may have revealed, may have been revealed through the conversation or through your own review of the plan. We're not talking about conditions of, that are outside the code.
So right now, I don't see any deficiencies.
I don't either.
We have some asks that seem to be willing to entertain.
Right.
So I guess I'll make the motion to approve. Any seconds?
Second.
Make a roll. All in favor, Kevin?
Deny.
Deny?
Yeah, deny.
Stuart?
I'm in favor.
I approve.
Approve is two to one.
Two to one, yes. Thanks, everybody. I guess we'll take a couple minute break here to allow applicants and stuff to mosey off. They choose, you all can choose to stay, our next topic is parking. I wouldn't have minded asking the applicant, what was, would have been the optimal parking space number for this property?
One to one.
109. Now that everyone has departed that hood, our next item on the agenda, which was old business, six point, six and six point one, is the proposed text amendment on parking. So back to Ron again, do we have to go through his staff report on that?
I don't have much detail for me to go into, but we did meet last month, actually talked about a couple months, last month, we went through a proposed draft of removing the minimum parking standards for non-residential developments, based on the direction from this board and previous conversations. You guys brought up several things, several corrections, edits, as well as some other items, so I've hopefully included all of them in the revised draft language and I highlighted them in yellow in your attachment A that I can just go over if you want me to go in that much detail.
No, but I guess, I guess I want to disclose to the other two members, there's a couple of things that Ron included that I sort of initiated, well, just want to call that out to your attention. I did change a few of the numbers in the non-residential parking uses table, and he has shown them like crossed out and then a new number in red with yellow.
Wondered where that came from.
That came from me because in reviewing these, I thought we needed to give, because these become a maximum or allowable.
Right.
That some of these uses needed a bit more headroom, then, so we can talk about, what kicked it off on mine mostly was the, where I started looking at it, was the dry cleaner, believe it or not, even though, because if you look at the, it's the bottom of the table on page 14 of the staff report. The, the way it was written, you get one space for 200 square feet of area used by the public, and I'm thinking of a dry cleaners, I don't go a lot.
Tiny.
Right, usually the front area is a little, a little counter and it's probably 100 square, so you get one spot, you're trying to need, so I gave them a little head, more headroom in, that they get a space for each 100, so if they got a little 12 by 12 area, they potentially get two spots if you do the rounding.
Right.
So that's how I got into changing a few of these, let's see if I can figure out which ones I did. We did, I did the.
Oh, eating establishments.
Yeah, I did the dry cleaning laundry from 200 to 100. I did the eating establishments from 200 to 150, because I was thinking a four topper table is usually, is about 12 by 12 or 10 by 10 or so square foot, covers a four topper, so to give them headroom to that. And oh, the health services, I changed that they get one spot for 200 instead of 300 because it seemed like to me that we have a, the aging community needs a lot of health services, and I think you need parking spots close to the health services, so I didn't want to constrict them too much on their top end, because I think if you're in need of health services, you're not going to be bicycling over there or walking, you may be inclined to use, so there's a, that spot I included, I, oh, storage facility, which I can, from 100 to only 50, some parking spots. So I, small changes in my thought there was a little more headroom, because we are, this is now a cap. The table is allowable, plus they're 20% extra and that's a cap. They can't. So I didn't want to make it unusable by that, and I can be had on disagreement on some of those. And the other one that Ron added, that was kind of chairman initiated, was on page 18 P. When a site is developed with a number of parking spaces of 100 square foot each, we prescribe the size, less than the allowed off-street parking numbers in the table, 50% of that area from the undeveloped parking space shall be reserved as landscape open space that is in addition to setbacks, buffer yard screening, interior parking areas required elsewhere in the serve, in the code, reserved landscape area, so it'll be separately tabulated on the site plan and delineated with cross hatching. So my thought there is, we, we have the 8% already and you have to, just as we seen today, a developer has to take 8% of their parking areas and landscaping, which is very specific. We can't change that number because that would probably run afoul of state law, that would be down zoning. So I chose this approach because I think it complies, I, not think, I'm highly confident that it complies with the, not a down zone, because we're asking for the area that we freed up by this up zoning, that they, they don't have to build as many spots, and taking 50% of that as landscaped open space, the other 50%, they can do as they want, extra building or whatever. So that to me is still an up zone.
Yeah, well, I'm comfortable with it not meeting the down zoning criteria, so I'm comfortable with that, with the approach.
I chose 50% because it was just like splitting what you got, but then I thought to myself, should it be 58%? Because if we made them put it there, they would have had to done 8%, but then I'm thinking we're kind of want to entice them to build less spots, leave less open ground and.
Yeah.
Told Ron to put it, it's 50%, seemed reasonable, you know, they won't be required to build as much, but if they do that, a portion of it they can use for their beneficial use, and half of it we take, not take, half of it we get used for permeable surface and landscaped areas, et cetera. But it seemed like it was a good up zone trade-off. And the last, one other thing I got from Ron, 3.33B. If you go back, I think we have to change some words there, because it says required and needs a change to occurs. It's not in the parking section, it's 3.33B.
So it's not in this section?
Yeah, it's not in this, it's in the next section. I think that has to be corrected. If we do this, that also has to be corrected. Let's see if I can find. 3.33 dot B. Pedestrian facilities, yeah, I'm currently on my page 121, but it could be different. The last sentence says, redevelopment or change of use of existing non-residential multifamily structures does not require the installation of sidewalks, except where the addition of five or more parking spaces is required. I think the word is required, needs to be replaced with occurs. Basically what that says, we're saying, if you put five spots in, you got to put a sidewalk in front of it.
Sure.
And because we say now is required, when they're no longer required, but if they occur, they have to do it. So I think that, you see where it's at?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the changes I induced the staff to make, so any questions or comments on that or anything, Kevin or Stuart, whoever?
And one of them, I need to add on, in the table, we have for eating establishments and maybe one other use, the drive-throughs, queuing for drive-throughs. I did add language there just to make it clear that those, the queuing was not subject to the elimination of minimum parking standards. So that was my attempt to make sure that that was clear, that if you have a drive-through, you still have to have X amount of spaces for that queuing. I hope you guys saw that in your, in your revised.
Yeah, and that, that's important to have in there too.
Yeah, because to me, someone could certainly have read it and said, well, if the ordinance is approved, oh, we don't have to put in these queuing spaces now.
Right. All right, so, so I kind of went down a rabbit hole when we started talking about all this landscape stuff, and so I did a case study of, and I took a half acre lot and put a building on it and came up with how many parking spaces, made up some businesses that would be in there, and then just kind of went through current code, and then what if we eliminated the parking? Because I was just curious, what realistically, what were, what were we doing? And so my building initially was 4,800 square feet with, I think it was 26 parking spaces, and after eliminated the parking requirement, the building went up to 6,000 square feet and the parking went down to 17. And what happened is, so the building got 25% larger, but the landscape requirement went down because it's related to the pavement that they build. So my, my comment, and I was emailing with Ron about, you know, how can we capture some of that back? And then you had the language about the 50%, and then I applied that to my case study and it worked. The 50% thing worked. So I felt really good that we kind of did an example of, you know, what are we actually doing to?
So applying that language in paragraph P, I think it was.
Yeah.
The building could not go up to that side because they'd have to reserve.
No, it, it still could go up to the 6,000 square feet, but the landscape area wound up being in the back of the building.
Regardless, you still got additional landscaping.
You still got additional landscaping.
Less impervious surface ultimately, I would guess, soon.
And actually, the total impervious went down, even though the building got bigger, because, and just so you know, the parking space that you're saying is 162 square feet. In the industry, we count half the lane also. But I'm fine with just using the 162.
Yeah, I just went through our definitions, it was a 17 by nine.
Right, but I guess what he's saying is you don't, if you don't have the space, you don't have to have the drive out and get there.
That's right.
So that, but I think the numbers work.
Right. We used to use 300 square feet as a rule of thumb, you know, that's for a parking space.
Would we run a file change in that size to including some of that?
I don't, I don't think, because if you make that larger than.
It conflicts with the definitions.
Yeah, I think we ought to just leave it, because it's easily definable, because that's our parking space size.
And how much more, if we had it 58% as opposed to 50, would have picked up just a few more square feet?
Well, it would have, it still would have worked.
We'd only pick up a little more.
Yeah.
Another 8% of whatever was saved.
Right.
That's, I went back and forth between 50% and 58%.
I think the 50's fine.
Because I think we want, again, the concept is to encourage them to build less asphalt.
Right.
And, and they still probably wouldn't overbuild their building if they didn't need it, right? Because their cost, a 6,000 square foot building costs more to build than a 4,800 square foot building.
That's right.
If they don't feel they need it, say they only think the optimal is 54, that's what they would build.
That's right.
And there'll still be more leftover for grass.
That's right. That's right. So the only thing I had, the only question I had about that P section is it says shall be reserved as landscaped open space. So what is the landscape standard? I mean, if they have an acre open space and they plant one shrub in the middle of it, is that landscaped open space?
That's not defined. I mean, I think it, what is, you mean, what is, what are you trying to accomplish, more trees or just, or grass? Or, I mean, I know you don't want necessarily rocks and.
Don't want rocks.
Impervious materials, like 57 stone.
Can we, can we tie it to, when we say that, tie it to another part of our code?
Yeah.
Like the buffer, sorry, like a cross-reference?
Right.
Yeah.
Should be landscaped like, you know, a subdivision buffer or something, or a residential bu, I mean, what I mean.
Buffers are really intense, so if you try and apply that to this whole area.
Right, because it said, so basically, right, the way it say, we do nothing to that, they could just have.
Grass. That's landscape.
Which is not bad, right? It is landscape.
Landscape.
But if we would like, can we, we have any other minimal thing we can tie them to to say, okay, a few bushes and a tree here would be nice, but, or how about we tie it to the other parking lot, landscaping requirement?
Looking at parking facility landscaping right now. Like an island has to have eight feet in width, no less than under square feet. Each island should contain at least one tree and six shrubs.
So why don't we apply it to that? If they have to do at least one tree and six shrubs.
Think it up.
And the eight foot width might work too, that the 50% of it has to meet that standard.
I'll just reference that standard in the landscaping.
Because what I'll tell you from experience is that I, I've had a bunch of landscape architects that saw some. that saw some of these rules about open space. And so they created little one-foot strips all over a subdivision that met the open space, but you couldn't actually do anything in there. It just wound up being an exercise and, you know, being a, you know, a pain. So I like the eight foot width, you know. That actually makes it wide enough to actually landscape. And if they want to have the other 50%, you know, as rocks or whatever, I guess they, they can do that.
A ground cover or whatever, have a ground cover.
Right.
I'll either reference that section. I want, I just need to say, I want to look at code flow, how it flows. Or I may specifically add, if it's, if it's, ultimately see what you guys vote on, add the eight foot minimum, one tree, eight shrubs. May, I'll see which works best.
Yeah, I just wonder if, you know, if it's a really large area.
Yeah, that's what I want to look at.
One tree and six shrubs, is that really?
Per how many square feet?
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we could do it per how many square feet.
If you have a peninsula, it's 144 square feet, right?
Yeah.
And it has to be at least eight feet wide. And there's whatever, how many trees and some, however many, I mean, 162 square feet per would work.
Right.
You should, you know, you know the answer.
Tie it to that, the size of the space.
But if you got 10,000 square feet of this open space and now they're going to have to plant...
5,000 square feet.
Well, that's unlikely because that means you got a huge lot and a little building.
Well, it could happen because you could have lots that have unusable space in the back or something like that.
Sometimes it depends on tree species as well. Like a live oak as an example, which I think would be a preferred type tree.
Right.
You need a lot more growing room for it to properly grow than you would say some other smaller, 100 story tree.
It's not going to hit an eight foot wide strip.
Right.
That might be a crepe myrtle.
Right.
Well, like to me, it, well, it's, again.
It's a good catch, though, of what, what is the standard? I can play with that a little bit, bring it back, or you guys can want to just give me the liberty to move it forward to council.
Well.
Ultimately, you know, you got to make a decision today on whether you, whether you approve, deny, or, or continue, but.
So I guess, so on this point, what we're saying in paragraph P, we want to make sure everybody understands what we're saying, is on a per 162 foot or so square foot basis of the reserved extra area, we would like that landscaped in accordance with the internal parking lot standards, essentially, right? Because we have an internal parking lot landscaping standard.
Yes.
So basically, based on the eight foot net, those approximate dimensions, we want them to add trees or shrubbery or other landscaping likewise. Is that what we're saying? So Ron has proper guidance?
Right, so talk specifics. If I reference that B, the, what I read earlier, it says, each island shall be, and it's talking about a landscape islands. So like think of the end of a parking row, a landscape island. Minimum eight feet in width and no less than 100 square feet. So we're talking 62 square feet more in this scenario. And that's that each island shall contain at least one tree and eight shrubs. And it gives, you know, specific heights and so forth. So you should be able to plant, and then so what I'm looking at is per 162 square feet divided by 50%, right?
Right.
So what, I think what, to achieve what I'm hearing you say is the eight, one tree and eight shrubs per that 52, per that, per that area based on a square foot basis.
Right, so what if it's three or four or five different areas? They're going to get hit with that.
I think we're looking at accumulative, so I don't know that it has to be spread out. It could be, okay, cumulatively, I come up with 3,000 square feet or, so I need to plant 1,500 square feet throughout.
Right.
And this code, this would require them to cross hatch where that area is.
Right.
So I don't think they have to necessarily, they could group it or they could disperse it.
Right, all right. So if we've made that clear enough that?
Your direction is clear to me. I think I still need to do some, some, think about how to word it in the code. I know you don't, I always like to, I know sometimes you want to see which, ultimately what you're voting on. I'll try to put something together real quickly.
Okay. Anything else, Stuart? Kevin, any thoughts, questions? Clear on this landscaping extra?
I'm good on that.
Okay. So I guess the question is for the board, do we feel we have given Ron enough direction to authorize this action A on this text amendment? Such that he can finalize it and bring it to the council?
I think so, and I kind of like for it to move forward so that the hotel doesn't have to go into a shared parking agreement. It's just...
They can, they're already there, so it'll be...
I know, but it's just an extra document that has to get recorded and all that other stuff. This would just, because they're not part of this 50% thing. They're just part of us saying mud doesn't have to, to meet it. So I'd hate for it to not move forward. Might make their life easier.
The point is, again, to spur some further, especially in overlay district, I guess, some further economic development. We don't want, I mean, the point to where we started is we don't want exorbitantly high required minimum parking to dissuade people from looking at a site in our non-residential districts.
Right.
That now they have an opportunity to look at it and see if it fits their needs and better. And then in doing so, we get some more shade trees and some more impervious ground and, as opposed to asphalt.
Yeah.
With stripes on it that stay empty all day other than get wet and heat up.
Right, right.
So that's where, so yes, I guess I'd like to push it to council unless we think we need to see the final version.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like...
I think we can trust Ron and Lisa to do this.
Motion to approve.
Well, so we, we need a motion to go to action A with the recommended comments to staff for corrections and additions. Do I have such a motion?
A motion?
Any second?
Second.
Okay, so let me read action A. "The planning board hereby recommends approval of the proposed amendment to the unified development ordinance with the suggestions as stated today and finds that it is one with, that is one with the towns, I think it's compliant, with the towns, consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, the 2017 land use plan, as the policy states regarding economic development and environments tend to generally support the idea of no parking minimums for non-residential development. And two, that is in the public interest because the amendment promotes economic development, protects the environment, and supports small business in accordance with goals of the outline in the 2017 land use plan." Votes, yea or nay for action A? Kevin?
Yea.
Aye.
Aye, Ron is aye, so recommend, and A carries 3, 2, 0. And I guess I would like your copy of whatever you sent to the...
Yeah, I just banged something out so I can read it.
You already got it.
You can send it to us.
I can read it, but what I added was, "Each landscaped open space shall be a minimum of eight feet in width and provide one tree and eight shrubs per 100 square feet." It's a little bit different, but it ties it back to the land, to the island. And it also, 50%, remember, it's 50% of 162.
Right, so that's eighty-one square feet.
It's 81 square feet, but 100 foot was round. To me, it's a good, a better number to work with.
Okay.
And you're okay presenting it to council and explaining without?
Yes.
Guys all good with that part?
First step will be just trying to get it scheduled for public hearing, I guess.
Public hearing, then present it to council, and then they would... Any administrative comments? I don't think we got anything else going.
The only administrative comment that I have for you is just a heads up that we are finalizing the Majestic Oak Park major site plan. We have had conversations with KMA and have received verbal approval. That will be coming to you hopefully in October. The tree board looked at it on Tuesday and will be providing the landscaping plan for the perimeter. There's a 10-foot perimeter for landscaping around the landward side.
So the tree board is getting us nice trees?
So between the houses on north shore in the park.
We're getting nice trees or?
Nice trees. Mm-hmm. Well, the plan also includes planting an additional live oak tree and that will be gated fenced as the one is there now with the other amenities. We have, the bathroom unit was actually scheduled for phase two and we have moved it into phase one as well. So once I have the lighting plan, we were going to go with solar lighting in that, and we are working on that plan. And when the tree board, will they meet the 18th? I think they meet September 18th, and then I'll have that landscaping plan. And then it'll be ready to come to you all.
Just to go, is that the one on the island?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I guess I only have a question, any update? Do we have a, any new members?
We do. The town council should appoint a new member at the September 8th meeting.
So that member then would be sworn in on our September, whatever date meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good. Okay, you're good, anything else? Guys, Ron, you're good? Public comments? This period is public comments on anything, even outside the agenda. Anyone like to speak? Same rules, three minutes, name, address, and go ahead. Okay, hearing no comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn?
We got a public, we have a comment.
I'm sorry about that. September 18th is, I will not be here. I don't know if we can move that meeting, but I cannot be here on the 18th of September. I just want to make sure you have a clue.
I think Richard.
Rich will be back.
Richard will be back and we should have the new member then. So we should be okay.
Okay.
Assuming, no matter where you're at vacation, you'll be watching us on YouTube. Good, Stuart, anything else?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.